Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, December 2nd, and it is 8:35 a.m. In front of you, you have this morning's agenda. I have a few items that I'd like to add to the agenda. A travel request from the New Canaan Police Department, we could put that after item four. And then the Erwin Barn update. Item seven, then the seven, after item seven, and a purchase order increase. And we can add that towards the end, whereas, and and do you have to get out of here for anything? Are you going to be here for the meeting? Okay, then I guess, oh yeah, you will be here for the meeting. So we'll do that just after the, why don't we do it after the, we can just do it after the appointments.
Twelve point five.
Yeah, twelve point five. I got a lot of point fives today. Okay, could I get a motion to amend the agenda?
Some would.
And it's unanimous, and if I could get a motion to approve the agenda as
some would.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting on November 18th, do I have any additions or corrections?
None here.
None here. So if I could get a motion to approve the minutes.
Some would.
It's unanimous. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address. BOSdistribution@newcanaanct.gov. If anyone wishing to address the board saying none, we'll move on to travel requests from Chief Federico.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I have two travel requests. First one is for Officer Oaks to attend Occupant Kinematics for the Traffic Crash Reconstructionist. The course is in Windsor Locks, December 8th through December 12th. And because of the distance it is, it would cost more to pay him the overtime to travel then. And it's a pretty intensive class, so we're requesting travel to not to exceed $1,600, including registration fee and hotel stay.
Any questions?
Sixteen hundred or fourteen hundred?
Sixteen hundred for this one.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, so he's going up Monday and then coming home. Yeah.
Okay.
We learned last.
Yeah, good. All right, if I could, any other questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canaan Police Department for travel expenses for Officer Oaks in an amount not to exceed $1,600 in order to attend the Occupant Kinematics for the Traffic Crash Reconstructionist Training Course from December 8th through the 12th, 2025, in Windsor Locks, Connecticut.
Some would.
It's unanimous.
That's a mouthful.
Okay, and then, yes, it was. And then, second item.
Second one is for Officer Castro to attend the Basic School Resource Officer Training. She was recently appointed to fill the role of School Resource Officer for, I believe it's going to be West School. That training is in Archibald, Pennsylvania, December 15th through the 19th. Again, she'll be going up that morning and then coming home at the end of the week. So this is December 15th through 19th, and between tuition and hotel and meals not to exceed $1,400.
Is it three or four nights a hotel for $500?
Four. It's in the middle of Pennsylvania.
That's enough. That's all I know, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's $50 a day for meals. It seems cheap. It seems low.
Okay, and then you have an additional 200 in there for
for a little late on the tuition. We were trying to get her to the February course, but she had a conflict, so we're in a little bit of a rush. That's why we added it late. So we're trying to get her in there before she starts.
It's an SRO-centric course for her.
It's a basic SRO. Yeah, it's the initial training for the School Resource Officers, and she's starting January 2nd in the elementary schools.
Right.
Where's the travel? I mean, they drive a police vehicle down, or how?
If we have a training vehicle available, they'll take one of our
There's costs associated with that, but it's just not in here, so.
All right.
So that cost is just picked up on the police.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Great. If I have no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canaan Police Department for travel expenses for Officer Castro in an amount not to exceed $1,400 in order to attend the Basic School Resource Officer Training in Archibald, Pennsylvania from December 15th to December 19th, 2025.
Some would.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. All right. Item five, fire equipment purchase. Morning.
Morning.
Okay, the Fire Department would like to open a PO this year for Superior Spring in Hampton for the amount not to exceed 20,000 for apparatus repair and service. This is a large one for the rear axle of the ladder truck, and then a couple smaller repairs on other apparatus for spring work. You want to do it individual?
Yeah, why don't we do these individually? So is, is, I know these are very specific and technical things. Is this sort of the only provider of this?
This is the one that's recommended, and it's pretty much the closest provider to us now that the fire service has been using.
Yeah, and I mean, the quote's got it broken down right down to
Yeah.
$5 bolt assembly. I mean, it's
And they won't know 100% until the rear ends apart, that if they need anything else, so kept a little just in case. Little contingency on that for initial purchase order.
Okay, any other questions? If not, and if I could get a motion to approve a FY26 purchase order with Superior Spring of Hampton, Connecticut for an amount not to exceed $20,000 for apparatus service and repair.
Some would.
Second, it's unanimous, and we have this in the budget, Karun.
Yes.
Okay, and then Task A Ford.
Okay, request for Task A Ford to purchase our new pickup slash, we call it a utility truck for the quote currently just got updated on Monday for $74,234.55 with 10% contingency, so asking for 80,000 for, this was off government bid that the town uses for Task A. So for the new utility pickup truck, so replacing our 20-year-old, 19-year-old current pickup truck.
Why is there a contingency? Isn't it just what it is?
I just, I'm just nervous if something comes in other than this estimate that's going back and forth with him on options. That was the only reason.
What would be the other options that you would need to be put on here? I mean, because quite frankly, when you buy a truck or car, we go, we get it specked out, and then we get a bit.
No issues taking the contingency off. I just didn't, you know, just for, you know, for the new quote is 74,234. I mean, that's, everything should be on here. We reviewed it multiple times, so.
I have 73,980.
Yeah, this didn't, the request didn't get changed, but I updated the quote with Tucker on Monday, I believe, right? Tucker, did they, yeah, did they get the new quote?
Okay. So, so what is the number that you need?
The new quote is $74,234.55.
Seventy-four, two thirty-five?
Two thirty-four, fifty-five.
Two thirty-four. And what was, what, what's, I mean, it's only, it's only $300, but it's just different than the quote we have. Is there just a different piece of equipment that went on it?
No, we, well, that was, we started looking closer at the options and changed the the bed size. They went, the committee went with a shorter bed size that actually increased the cost of the utility body versus the original quote. And then the seat package inside the, inside the pickup may have changed that a little bit also.
Do you have it with you? Can we see it?
Yeah.
Options on the other side.
Okay, from that here.
So Chief, what about, what about delivery? Are we talking about how, how long out are they on?
I haven't even, yeah, it's, I didn't ask, because the color is going to be the biggest issue probably with, with that. And we haven't talked any trade-in value from them yet. Fred and Lou told me to get a trade-in value from them. They haven't gotten back to me yet. I don't know if they're probably going to need to see what we currently have. And then we could see if it's better to put it on Gov. deals.
And as far as the, so it's basically a choice between a six-foot and eight-foot body, right, on that?
Yeah, it's six and a half versus the eight foot.
So you went six and a half.
Yes.
Yeah. And the utility body for you guys is really set up so that you can open a door, grab gear, and go.
Correct. We can put a little equipment on this, on this pickup versus the old one, which was just the conventional pickup bed.
So this will have the actual, like, doors on the side.
Correct.
And does this include all the accessories, all the lights and everything?
No, that does not. That's just the truck and the, the paint, you know, truck, the body and the paint on that. The outfit would go to another vendor.
And that'll be a separate ask.
Yes.
How much does the outfit?
It's probably going to, with the radio and the light package, it'll probably come in about 18,000 with the radio.
And did you say the last one is 20 years old?
Yes, nineteen.
So we get a long life on these?
Yes.
Okay, this is a silly question, but does the light package and all that stuff last the same period? Did you change that out?
No, it usually lasts the entire
Okay.
Well, sure, no, a shorter body, a shorter body is, it'll change the spec of the truck. It's a lot easier to park it, too.
Drive, yeah, parking, driving.
Because I'm not a truck person or a car person, like, why does a shorter body make a car more expensive or a truck more expensive? No, no, I don't even, I'm used, I'm just, it's not the, it's not, I'm just asking a question.
I thought it was coming in lowered also.
I'm just, I'm asking.
The correct answer is higher demand, so much more in demand than an eight-foot.
Okay, there we go. I, that, that explanation makes sense to me.
Yeah, we took a foot off. I thought it was going to come in.
One last question. You, you're prepping it for a snowplow, or you have plans to put a plow on it at some point?
But we don't, we do not want to put a plow on this one, but the, their recommendation is to do the plow package, the front end for what we use it for. So they said, put that package on there. You can always put a plow on later, even though we're not thinking of it initially.
And then will you tow anything with it? Do you have a trailer brake controller on there, is there?
That's, yes, we do potentially have to tow a couple of trailers that the town has.
So what would you use a snow package, what did they say you would use a snow package for?
Well, it's just, it's a small amount of money, but it beefs up the front of the truck and it makes it, you know, it's a stiffer suspension, so it'll drive, you know, and hold up a little better over ten years.
Okay, you are earning your
I know, I said, I, it's good.
Cool it and transmission coolant and all that comes with it also.
And this is, we proved this in the budget, this is a budget item?
Correct, yeah, FY26.
And when, within this price point, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. And the outfits in the, in the budget also.
Okay.
For the truck.
When you add everything up, though, you add the lights and the whole thing. I mean, these trucks are now, it's almost $100,000 for a basic utility truck. It's crazy, but that's the world we're living in. All right.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a purchase order with Task A Ford in an amount not to exceed $74,234.55 for the purchase of a new utility pickup truck. Second, it's unanimous. Thank you. And then approval of a purchase order with Marcus Communications.
Correct. Marcus Communications, we're looking to purchase four portable radios. These are the tri-band radios. It's for, not to exceed 22,000, these are radios that would get issued to our members. Everyone gets a radio. We found that the Kenwood radios are good quality for a little less than what we're currently using with the Motorola. So trying these four out, and we're going to give them to our callback members for water supply and so on, so they can have the tri-band communications, and the other ones would get issued to our fire company members as they become active firefighters, our current ones.
So I just, another, go back to the same first question I had with the, the other. So is this, is this Marcus the only one? I know we do a lot of, and do you like, need similar radios to police? You know, is there a benefit to sort of like a mass purchasing on, you know, or joint purchasing to sort of reduce?
Yeah, that's a Ross question, but we haven't had good luck on mass purchasing for price difference on those. There hasn't been a very good
You use a different, but I mean, are they similar? I imagine they're similar, so.
They're similar to what we have now, but it's, those are the highest-cost radios that we currently are using and we purchased. And they were the only approved ones when we purchased them two years ago. Now the state has allowed other radios to come onto their system, which we vetted two other, two other radio products, and we found that these, the Kenwood radios are quality radios, so they came in a little cheaper than our current Motorola.
So just, I guess the question, because now you're on Russ as well, and we have the chief here, do you use the same radios in the police department and the fire department? The same vendor, same radios, like, imagine
I'm with you, I'm with you. The multiple different type of actual hardware?
Yeah.
Does it work? You know, so.
Yeah, the hard, the different radios will work. This will be a second vendor. This will be a different radio vendor than we are currently using.
It's basically the same type of radio, just a different vendor.
Correct, because it's a different, it's a different model.
IBM PC or an off-brand PC. I just want to make sure, because, you know, yeah, when you have this technology, you end up having redundancy and stuff doesn't work because it doesn't talk.
Right, the system, the radio system itself, it'll work on the radio system, but the actual piece of hardware would be a different vendor. If the radio had a problem, it would go back to this vendor versus our current vendor for our overall radio system.
And is the system, is the system the Motorola one that we
Motorola currently runs.
We have to pay it very expensive every year and it goes up, but Motorola, yeah, but so Motorola doesn't block you from using non-Motora products to use the system, is that correct?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, right?
Not anymore. It was blocked by the state that we only can use Motorola, but now it's been opened up to other vendors. I don't want to say blocked, but they weren't approved.
So how much do we save using these versus if you did a Motorola?
Probably saving about $3,000 a unit.
Okay, so the Motorola's are how much?
The Motorola's were coming in, we bought one last year with the car. It was about $8,900.
Okay, so this is, yeah, so, all right, and they're going to work?
And we vetted, again, we were field testing multiple radios in the firehouse, and these, these seem quality, you know, rates. Get some, I mean, expected life. Go ahead, go ahead, Russ.
I'll chime in.
Okay, fine. Sorry.
Hey, nice digs you have there.
Thanks. I was actually in a meeting with the public schools, safety stuff, so we're still making sure the equipment worked here, so. So I just wanted to make a couple statements on the radio thing. So this is actually a very good thing, because as you've probably heard me say over years, that Motorola has been incredibly expensive and has been a single provider that most everybody uses. So this is the, our first foray into trying to use Kenwood radios, which are almost half the cost. And this, the capabilities on a technical standpoint should be the same. And what the chief was talking about with the state radio system, which all of our neighbors have moved to, we're one of the few that haven't yet, is that they do allow this equipment onto their network, which is great. So we're, this is the first attempt with these new radios to try them out, see how they work, and then potentially, if they work well, this could be something we could move across other departments as well, because we're tired of spending $10,000, $11,000 on the actual portable radios themselves. And this is a potential same capability, much less price portable radio. Now, the second half of the discussion was the infrastructure. So our radio system for the town, the backbone, the antenna repeater sites, the brains of it, all that, are Motorola. And we will, for now, we have to sustain that, because we own the infrastructure. That was part of the project that the late and wonderful Stuart Salbeni led, which we own the infrastructure and it works very well for us, and it is a Motorola system. And so we will, actually, as part of my budget presentation coming up for next year, is the continuing cost to carry and maintenance for that. Are there other players who do the actual backbone stuff? Yes, but really Motorola has covered that, Marcus. So I just wanted to give that, that kind of clarifying remark. This is actually really a good thing, and thank you to Albi and the Fire Department for being willing to, let's get four of them, try them on the system, make sure it works, it does exactly what the Motorola does, and then this might be the move going forward, a substantive cross-saving.
So is our, since Chief's here, and I'm just going to ask, since you're still here, so are all your radios Motorola right now? Okay, so we could potentially
Yeah, across police, fire, EMS, public works, everybody uses Motorola, and the single provider for Motorola, because Motorola has licensed retailers and repair people. Ours is Doorcom. That's the only choice. If you want Motorola, you got to go to the person who's in this area. Same, we could bounce between different Kenwood vendors, but when I talked to Kenwood, so I kind of did a little bit of the running on this. When I talked to Kenwood National Sales and I talked, this Marcus was the one they sent us to. So in theory, they're all under the same banner of the Kenwood product line.
What's the warranty on these?
You don't know the answer to that question. For a portable radio, we found that they're, well, this is part of the reason we want to test the Kenwoods, too, because the Motorola's are as expensive as they are, they're pretty bulletproof. So I don't know the answer to that, but we can get it for you.
Yeah, I'll have to find out from Marcus what the warranty is on it, but just to clarify, we did field tests, and, yeah, we had field tested radios over there. So it's not that these are four brand-new, first time we're going to use them. You know, and some of the issues and with that, sometimes we, some of the frequencies aren't unlocked and stuff like that. So those were some of the challenges we had over there. So it's more of a programming issue with the radio versus the actual physical radio itself.
And they're, they're not going to program, they gave us loners to test, and they're not going to program a loner with the template we have with 200-plus frequencies on it.
We'll do that once we purchase them.
And that's why there's a little bit of contingency on this one. If something needs to get unlocked that wasn't originally, they didn't see, and we need to unlock a frequency or do something different on that.
How long?
And a really great part of this that is worth noting is we ran a big exercise a few weeks ago, Avani Park, with the state of Connecticut, Westchester in Connecticut, and Fairfield County, and the relationship we forged with the state in particular around the system, they are really behind us in doing this. I think New London and a couple places east of Connecticut are the first ones that are using Kenwoods now. We're the first ones in Fairfield County, and a lot of people are like, hey, we'd love to do this if it works as well, especially since it's so much less expensive.
So, Russ, with these, a cost associated with this, a lot of it says, not just the hardware, but the licensing and the software keys and stuff. Do we run into having to upgrade, like, you know how they get you on this stuff? They get you in, and then the software has to be updated and the licensing. Is it, we're going to run into costs associated with keeping them current?
No, I doubt it. Portable radios are pretty much, I don't want, they, they are now largely software-based, at least when you're on the Trump state system, but they go off of what's called P25, which is a national standard, an industry standard. So the way their program should stay the way they're programmed, the only thing we're exploring, which is not on these Kenwoods, and we may be exploring for future radios, is a thing called over-the-air programming, which is just a software thing. It's a couple hundred bucks for a radio. And that allows you to, instead of having to pay Norcom a lot of money, or, in this case, Marcus, a lot of money to come down and reprogram 300 radios, and you have to get all the radios, all the people, get all the trucks together, you could just do it wirelessly over the network. So that's the only other thing that I could foresee, but I even, these radios, I doubt it. I don't think so, so. Now, usually, portables, you buy them, you use them until they, eventually the batteries completely fail, or they, they reach end of life because the technology has moved away.
Okay, great.
That's the difference between portable radios and the actual infrastructure. The hardware that runs the town stuff, yeah, that's, that server blades, that software, it's to prevent hacking. It's, you've got to have internet backhaul, so you got to have internet connections back to the brain. Those things have continuing costs, but the portable radios don't.
Thank you.
We demoed for about six months.
So you, I mean, all different, all different parts of town, and you know the coverage is there.
Yeah.
That's great. That's a long time.
That's great. So maybe either Motorola will start to bring their prices down, or we'll have a new vendor.
I mean, gosh, I hope so.
Competition is good for everybody.
You'll figure something else out. Don't worry.
All right, so if I have no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a purchase order with Marcus Communications in an amount not to exceed $22,000 for the purchase of portable radios.
Some would.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks for checking that out, everybody.
Yeah.
Problem.
And then, purchase order for, with the town of Fairfield.
Yep, last one is our annual service fee for dispatching services for $78,000 for the Fire Department using Fairfield Regional Communications, July 1st through June 30th.
Does it change every year, Albi?
Yeah.
Not, no, we got one more year on the contract, so this year, and then FY27. And then I've been asking them to start thinking about if there's going to be any changes in that.
Thank you.
And how many towns are on?
Fairfield, currently, just three of us. Fairfield and Westport are all, all their services go through the regional center. We're the Fire Department. And then there's one town, I don't know if it's official yet, smaller town than us, that's supposed to be onboarding within the next month.
Where do, like, Wilton and Darien and
They, they still handle their own.
Oh, really?
Yes, their own 911 center and dispatching.
Okay.
Is there a reason for that? I mean, wouldn't, you would think that they'd want to be in a
preference with, you know, what their, how their system works, you know, and Wilton, a couple of them just went to, like, bought into bigger kind of like us with the radio system, we bought into it before some of the ideas came to fruition, and then, you know, they didn't have time to do it, so they're already invested heavily into their system and didn't want to switch.
No further questions. If I could get a motion to approve a purchase order with the town of Fairfield in an amount not to exceed $78,000 for the fire dispatching services.
Some would.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Ryan. And John.
Good morning.
Morning.
Today, we are requesting approval to enter into contracts with contractor equipment for the purchase of a New Holland Power Star 75 tractor. This purchase includes the trade-in of an outdated tractor currently in the Parks fleet. If approved, this will add a New Holland unit while removing a limited-use tractor. The New Holland has demonstrated its value and reliability within our operations. We anticipate returning with a request to purchase the same or similar attachments used with our existing New Holland tractor, including a snowplow and flail mower. The Power Star 75 is also compatible with our trailers, athletic fields, maintenance equipment, and other grounds maintenance attachments. This purchase is available under the Connecticut State Contract, and the total cost, including the trade-in value, is $69,017.60. No contingency has been added, and we were, we will return for approval if additional costs are required. Funding for this purchase is currently available and budgeted within our Parks capital budget.
So how old is the tractor that says the Ford 4140?
John answered this question because I wasn't born yet.
Unfortunately, the other tractor
ready.
Yeah. We're not exactly sure the production date, but 1981. I was still in high school when that was built, so. It's quite old. We've got, we've got our money.
This is a silly question. Does this, like, look like a tractor tractor, or is it like a big lawnmower?
It's a tractor tractor, yeah, with an enclosed cab.
You know what I mean, because they use the word tractor a lot for different things.
One of these already, that's it, right? We don't have two of these.
Correct. We only have one. The other, the 1980s tractor that we have now is an old Ford with an open cab, and it's, it's, yeah, no cab, and it's very limited use right now. We use it to flail, but a couple issues have risen, and it's not worth the expense to fix it, so.
So we may have seen this driving down roads, actually, to go to different places, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Usually, the blades are off and you're driving from sacks to somewhere, or, or, is that, is that the unit that we're talking about?
Are you the replacement one or the new one?
The one that was, we're replacing.
The one to replace it, yes, you'll probably see it, you maybe would see it, like, sitting up at Wavany while we're cutting the fields for the fireworks, instead of driving it back and forth.
God. Okay, yeah, that's an old one.
Guess I'm impressed you got $1,000 for it.
No.
Yeah, I guess.
You know, that's basically pretty much the scrap metal price type thing, you know?
Okay.
So looking, looking at the quote, though, what, so it looks like we were buying extra tires here. Can you explain that?
But But.
Doesn't it come with tires?
Comes with a farm tractor tire. So they're, they're aggressive tread. So that's a replacement. Of tires so that they have turf treads on there because.
Different terrain.
Crew will use it on athletic field maintenance. Also, the turf tread tires are better for snow removal operations than. The regular farm tractor tires, so.
Yeah, so those, the farm tractor would be digging right into the field and.
Absolutely.
Boy, those are expensive tires.
They're big tires, yeah.
So in the future, if you think of it, throw pictures in, cause it helps.
Absolutely.
It just helps, cause you know, we don't do this stuff. You guys, I don't need a picture right now, like just in the future.
So you, you guys mentioned that this does not include the attachments that are coming. So can you give us an idea of cost of what we're looking at?
So currently, within this budget that we're purchasing this, we have eighty-four thousand dollars. So we anticipated using some of that money for some of the attachments. Um, and then we have some extra money within our budget for uh specific flail mower. So. Um, and John and I just have to finalize the plan for that.
This, this, the snowplow that we'd like to put on there will actually be in our capital request. Because it's, it's, it's a substantial amount of money.
How big a blade is that? Is that a?
It's a, it's a big one that.
Is the blade, the blade more than?
But you're looking up probably towards thirty thousand dollars, you know, but it's a, it's a very big plow. It has wings on it that can open up. For doing parking lots, et cetera. So it, it's, it's very useful.
I'll have pictures for that too, and I understand. It helps.
All right. Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to enter into contracts with Contractor Equipment Inc. In the amount of sixty-nine thousand seventeen dollars and sixty cents for the purchase of a new Holland Power Star seventy-five tractor.
So.
It's unanimous.
When do you get it? Is it available?
The only reason we possibly would have to come back for a different request. There are tractors out there. The dealer is looking to go back and forth. Once we finish this meeting, we will tell him that we have approval and we'll get him a purchase order as quick as we can.
All right. And then we have the purchase order increase.
Yes, thi- this is um for the work that was performed at the pool on the heaters over the summer. And it was, basically it was missing invoices that they didn't send to us. So we went over the ten thousand dollar limit and that's why we're in. That's why we're coming in looking for an increase in the purchase order of eight thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. In order to pay for the work that was done on the three heaters we have at the pool.
And this is within the enterprise fund?
Yes, it is. It's all in, in the pool enterprise fund.
Any questions? Not if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to increase a previously approved purchase order with CB Longo Mechanical Services. In the amount of eight thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars related to pool heater repairs and maintenance at Banko Pool.
So.
Second.
It's unanimous. Okay, um, Erwin Barn.
Good morning. Thank you for adding this to the agenda. So this is for the Erwin Barn Building Workshop Carpentry and Drywall. Um, so the Department of Public Works is requesting authorization to enter into a contract for the installation. Of the fire rated walls, the ceilings, the doors, the window trim, um, and everything that's required to, to complete that envelope inside the Erwin Barn. The contract value is um thirty thousand five hundred plus a contingency of three thousand dollars. For a total ask of uh thirty-three thousand five hundred and the funds are available. There's also included in the, in the uh, the memo was a spreadsheet of where we are in the project. So you can see the overall amount. So.
Is that within the um shop carpentry line?
Yep, this was when the sharp shop, yeah, shop carpentry line and also the fire rated for, the fire rating for ceiling. Uh, item number twelve. Um, cause there was a, there was a five thousand dollar allowance as well. So between the two, we were actually a little under budget. So you'll see that I added uh approximately um. Three thousand dollars to contingency. So right now we have fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of open contingency.
Joe, how close to completion do we get with this? Are we getting?
Yeah, the only, the only items that are open is the garage door, which there might be a possible value engineering idea. It was came in, it was fairly expensive. But obviously, um, it's the exterior of the building, so they wanted to match. Um, so that's, that's kinda driving up the cost there and uh the plumbing. And then we're pretty much done with just little nits and nats that we'd have to buy.
So be able to use it by when?
Um, for uh, by February first.
Okay.
And they can, you, you can utilize it, he can utilize it now. There's the open areas all cleaned out and ready, ready for him. Um, and there's a temporary heater that we're gonna turn heat on shortly. So he'll have a better, a better.
It's functional now, just not done.
Space than he had previously already.
Okay.
And so, just so I understand, so the, the two line items that we're looking at are the twenty-eight four in the shop carpentry. And then uh, the five thousand in the fire rating and sealing and then a hundred of it'll be taken out of contingency.
On. Well, I mean, I, I don't, I don't add the contingency up in the line items. I just have the contingency down below.
How much of our contingency we have, we had to use so far?
None. We've increased the contingency. I, so I'm requesting the authorization to spend the contingency of the three thousand, but I'm only, I'm only accounting for the, the thirty thousand five hundred. Um, as you can see in um line item three. And the reason why is I don't wanna double dip on the.
That, the two items that you have in the budget total thirty-three, four, but you're only spending thirty-five. I, I was looking at it differently. So, okay.
Thirty thousand five hundred, yes.
And then, so then the, okay. All right. So you're actually putting a hundred back to, you're not using all of the contingency.
Correct. We're putting money into, back into contingency.
Okay.
Overall project contingency.
Yeah, yeah. February first. February first, everything should be done.
So that's good.
Yeah, cause the, the facilities and everything are in and working and everything.
Well, there's not the, the, there's no bathroom in there yet. It's part of this project, but there is a, there's a port, a portable bathroom right outside.
I thought, I thought part of this project was doing.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. They're, they're not ready this, this instant, but they will be ready for February first, yes.
Okay. Cause I'm like, I see toilet accessories.
Yes, yeah, no, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
Okay. All right. So, um, so everything all in will be, will not be using an outside portage on in February.
Correct.
By February first. Okay. Great. Any other questions?
No, I mean, at some point I'd love to do another walkthrough, cause we walked through it earlier when it was sort of pre-enduring and so it'd be good to get enough. At some point, if you guys are over there, we'll take a walkthrough. Thanks.
Okay. See Erwin, Erwin Barn coming down.
Yes, that too.
Already done. Done. So, yeah.
Part of that. Okay. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve or request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract. With AW Construction LLC in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred. Plus a contingency of three thousand for a total cost of thirty-three, five. Project entails the installation of fire rated walls, ceilings, stores. Plus window trim. I have one more question before we vote. Um. I mean, is this the only group we, like, did we get other quotes?
There was, there was three other quotes previous.
Yeah.
Um, and then I, they changed the scope a little bit, cause they, they were gonna buy, they weren't buying the doors previously. Um, so there was three other, there was three other quotes.
And how close were they?
Well, within the, these, these people were, if you add the, um, the other contractors didn't have fire rated. Um, the fire rating. So if you add, adjust for the fire rating, these, these guys were the lowest.
All right. So I've, I've read it. Do you have a motion to? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving on to CPW project.
So as you were talking about Erwin, just the, as Amy mentioned, the Erwin House, the garage section or the cottage section has been demolished. Um, it's being started to be tracked out. Um, and they're starting to work on the house. And the goal is for uh Christmas, the only caveat is how hard the uh footing comes out. So, you know, that's a, it's a large footing. You know, bomb shelter. If it doesn't come out of the ground easily, then that might take a little bit of time, but we are, the goal is to be done by Christmas.
You have to take it out. Couldn't you just fill it up with soil?
It's, it has, it has some issues with it as far as, yeah. So we'd rather just give it a complete clean slate, cause then you don't know what you're gonna do with it later. And the last thing you wanna do is have a foundation in the ground, then wanna build another building on top of it. You gotta still take care of that foundation. So you better just.
Someday maybe.
It's just better to have a, a clean slate in the end. Um, work is ongoing on the alley in the back. Um, they're getting close to the, the secondary pour for the, uh, the staircase itself. The brick has been installed that ties the Elm Street into the sidewalk and they've started the uh brick line that runs straight down the middle. Sort of a, a yellow brick road, I guess, or brown brick road leading to tie it, connect the two together. Weather's from not allowing anything to happen today. They're out working today, but they're not gonna be able to pour just because of the, the conditions that they'll face. And their goal is to, is to continue to work on it. They've got additional staff working. Yesterday I had uh five people from Burns. And four from the contractor TriStar and he's aware of um the impetus and bringing it forward. So we're uh, he's trying, um, given the fact that he's even here today, knowing that he's not gonna get a, a full day in with rain and snow. And then for this weekend, we spoke to Laura Budd already. We're gonna have some liaisons up at the, up at the intersection, I'll call it the intersection. Um, with some lighting so that if anyone comes in. Cause it seems that a lot of people walk through that area to come down. We'll have two liaisons from our staff there for the night. Directing them either down to Main Street or up to uh the staircase at the, at the White Buffalo. So that there's no, uh, there's no confusion from outside people coming in. Once the, once the parking lot fills up, it's, you know, the, uh, those people know where to go, but the, uh, anyone else coming from outside will make sure that they, uh, they have it. We have staff already on hand, cause we've gotta close off the intersections. So we'll just have that staff sit up top and make sure that everyone is working, walking, uh, where they need to walk and being able to access the downtown. But during construction, we haven't had anybody coming up, standing there saying, where do I go? There hasn't been any of that issue. They come, they pay at the kiosk. And they walk straight back up again to uh, to um, the White Buffalo staircase. So it hasn't been anyone kinda congregating around. Not knowing exactly what's going on. Um, have had a lot of people on Elm Street looking in, but not anybody standing up on the top. And then it's the Waveney elevator, we're getting closer to uh.
Sure. So, um, just uh, because we're heading the holiday seasons and we have all these temporary um toters. For all the trash, that, um, you know, sort of, I think it's important to communicate where, how long. Before we can actually use the stairs so that the toters can go away and they can use those dumpsters that we've just put in.
I'll get a better definition from um TriStar and then what the moment that the staircase is available, well, the toters will be gone. For, for Friday night, for this, we're gonna put them in the alley so that they'll be off the street. There's, yeah, we can do that. There's no, no issue with that. And the, in speaking to the hauler, he had no problem with them being in the alley and then them taking them out to Elm Street. Right now, they've been on Elm Street just sitting there. We're making sure our staff that uh, they, when we go through our garbage every day, we make sure that there's nothing hanging out. So if there's any garbage on top of the cans or hang out of the cans, we take those immediately and take those with us. And anything else that's on the ground as far as cardboard or what have you. So it's basically, you're looking at just the toters themselves, so it's cleaner. Um, but to that point, we'll start bringing them inside. Now that we, now that that sidewalk area is open, we can bring the, now that the brick is all the way in. We can bring those toters inside. It's cause it's easier for the man to haul them back in and out. Um, going forward. And that was the original agreement with MDM was that they would be inside the alley and he would have to bring them out, not that they'd be on the street. So we can take care of that. So it's much cleaner on the street itself.
Are we, are we one pore away from?
No, we're two, we're, we're at least two pores away. Yeah, we have the walls and then the stairs. And I think that there's one frost wall as well that goes in, but I don't know if you can do the, 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 the stairs with the frost wall. It might have to be a second or, or a third pore. Small one. And then at that point in time, he'll do the, there's one set of panels that are not done right in front of the staircase, only cause they have to work on that. Once they do the staircase, they'll do that front pore as well, um, to take care of that area. And then we'll backfill the area. And he'll have, he'll have his open excavation to the side behind the building and he can work on that ramp and, but the staircase and everything else will be open. And then at that point, all the restaurants can utilize the stairs. We have some already taking their garbage up to the dumpsters up behind and not using the toters. They're actually just walking the, the construction path. Um, it really depends upon the staff member. Some staff member heads left coming out of the alley, some head right coming out of the alley. Just depends upon the staff member at the time.
But given, given the weather and everything and what you've run into on the job, I mean, I know we, we said this at our last meeting. I mean, we're open to. If we had to pave that temporarily until the spring, get it open. I'd rather have it open. I think we all would rather have it open.
That's the, that's the goal. That's exactly what we're gonna do. It's just, we're in, we're in the, we're in the corner of three properties jammed in the middle between two buildings. Um, I have to say that the two adjacent property owners, Jennifer Hearn and Terry Cody Spring have been fantastic working with both of them. Um, both have said, do what you have to do in order to make it work. They know it's gonna be beautiful. Terry specifically has allowed us access. In the back of her lot so that we can park the machine back there, uh, utilize it to uh pour the concrete, all of that. She's been very, very accommodating um during this whole process. So I have to say that both of them have been fantastic. Just by the nature of the beast of where we are, it's very, very tight in the area uh to work. But that's the goal, is to get it in so that we can have people actually come and go through that area. And then jumping forward to Waveney elevator, um, we've got about seventy percent of the materials have been delivered. They're in Shelton. So they're in the state, which is a good thing. They're stored at the, at um, the contractor's location. We had a coordination meeting last week, um, with all the contractors as to scheduling. We've got another one today. Um, just working through some of the final logistics as to the handoff between Alden Bailey and Champion Elevator. Um, and Darian Electric has finished their work. So they had a huge amount of work to do in the electrical panel that was. In the area where the elevator would be, um. The, uh, I won't get into specifics, but the, uh, in nineteen eleven, the grounds were changed. So the ground wire and the hot wire were changed in nineteen eleven. So they were totally different and every wire was black. So I had no idea what they were looking at until they pulled it out and had to test every single wire in there, in the panel. So now they've got all that completed and they're just waiting for Alden Bailey to open up the floor and they can finish the runs that they have and uh go forward. So. Uh, everyone's aware of the March fifteen date that we're finishing and um. John and the Recreation Department have been fantastic on opening the building up for us to come in. So the goal is today to say, starting on the fifteenth, and we're gonna run to the fifteenth and, and uh, we're gonna have an elevator by March fifteenth. It's operational and uh compliant. So that's the uh overall goal. And then the parking lot of Waveney is pretty much done. We're just waiting for the guide rail. It's open. So we, we had it striped. It's open. I've gotten a couple accolades on.
Tiger, it's beautiful. It, it looks fabulous. You should really go see it. I love it. What, what's the area that's not paved? It's like the, the, really attractive.
Yeah, that was, that was to help us with uh, with our drainage requirements, but it actually adds a little element to the, to it as well. And then once we put the wood guide rail around, that'll be in and they'll be stringing the lights. Lights are up, wires are run. They just need to string each light and then it'll be turned on.
You, you forget how unattractive it was. It was just there and now it's attractive.
It looked like the service area before, it looked like the service entrance and the service entrance actually was better than that entrance. So now.
Beautiful job. And it was fast.
Yeah, he did a nice job. Um, and then they're working on Pine Street right now. I'm uh debating whether to close it for the winter. Or allow them to continue one property at a time, just talking to the contractor to see. And I wanna talk to the business owners as well, cause I don't want it to be disruptive for them.
Is, is it, is it get too cold to do it? Is that what?
We're worried about the brick, only cause uh, if it, if there's frost, then the brick will, you know, it'll get some heaving in this, in the, in the spring or some settlement in the spring. So I'm a little concerned with that. So those are the, those are the uh, conversations we're having right now is to see whether or not. He's got this one piece that's defined where he's working, this all-town property. Um, up until uh, right before it goes into the next business and I'd like him to finish that and then we might just close, close doors for the winter. Um, I just wanted the, the uh, business owners on Pine Street to know that we're here and we're coming. We're just, you know, it's just a, a logistical, I don't, I don't. I don't think I wanna be in that where I've, I run into a problem in the spring with heaving or, or settlement of the brick. I, I don't wanna have any issue with that. or, or settlement of the brick. I, I don't want to have any issue with that. So that's all.
Going back to the LA one more time, um, are we going to have an issue with the, so once we finish the stairs, are we going to have an issue with weather for the ramp? I mean, is it, is it?
We're getting close. Yeah. I, I, I can't say, no, I can't say yes. The temperatures right now are hovering. So we're, we're okay. I don't want to get into winter conditions where I've got to tent it or do anything of that nature. So, um, I'm hoping that we have a little bit of weather now. We tend to get a couple of, you know, weekend or no more that, that, uh, where we can work and we don't have to get into that. I, I, I don't want to the expenditure of that to get into tenting or keeping it warm for the, for the time. I think we can work through the, uh, I think we can work through the weather itself.
Does that ramp, do you, do you have to have like a skid guards on it? You know, so it doesn't?
Well, it's brushed, so it's broomed like a normal sidewalk. So it'll be brushed across the, the path. So, uh, transverse to the path. That will help. Um, and then there are railings on both sides. So it'll be, uh, so it'll be compliant for grade and it'll be compliant for railings and it'll be compliant for landings. So every 30 feet, you have to have a landing. So they'll go 30 feet, you know, traverse 30 feet, turn at a landing. So it'll be stable and then turn again another 30 feet, turn at a landing and then come the last 16 or so feet to the end.
Skateboard heaven.
Over there? Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. Town clerk.
Morning.
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 Okay. We are here to present, um, two hires. First is Carol Rendy. As I've explained in the past, we had 175 resumes. We did 18 interviews and brought eight back. And we would like to present Carol to you. She currently works in the town clerk's office in Stanford. Uh, she does recordings, vital statistics, absentee ballots. And before that was at Superski Airport from 2017 to 23 in customer service and inventory management. Claudia, and I believe she would be a great candidate to bring in. And so she is the first recommendation.
Correct. Um, the town clerk in Stanford speaks highly of Carol and, um, we were impressed that she had experience in a town clerk's office. So that really made her stand out. And, uh, we would look forward to having her join our team.
And she can start that quickly?
Wow, that's great. That's great. So, um, I just, just a question. So, um, what, what are the duty differences between the administrative assistant and the assistant to the town clerk? Is that what we're doing?
So I think we usually start in that office with an admin so that they can learn the task, learn the duties as they learn them. Then they usually will get promoted to the assistant to the town clerk and then eventually the assistant town clerk.
And they, they, they provide administrative assistant to, assistance to, not only to me, but, but also to the assistant town clerks.
Okay. I just, uh, because this person's coming in with experience, I was confused. Um, okay.
That's the start of a great team, Donna, because Adrian is, you know, every time I've gone in there, Adrian does a great job. I, I know, I can't speak for every day, but I, every time I walk in there, she's just happy to, you know, helping somebody and she's always busy. So I think she needs some help too. So, good.
The next one is, um, going to be part-time and that would be John Amerelios, who has worked for the town before, has worked for Claudia. We are looking to bring him in 30 hours, uh, for the next three months so that Claudia can better understand what the needs are in that department and be able to train Carol, um, because John has already done the work.
So my only question with this one is, um, are we going to have a problem with, um, because it's not over 19 hours with, um, any union issues?
No, because it's short term. So right now it's only three months and then at three months, we will need to decide if we're going to go back out for a full-time position.
So if it's short-term in 30 hours, there's no benefits associated with it because it's a short-term engagement.
The goal will be to get to four, what is hopefully Carol works out. We've got three months in John's there. Then we'll go out for this fourth and final position and sort of fill up the team, I guess, you know, but.
Yeah, we felt that onboarding two, two full-time people at the same time was not advisable. So we're going to get Carol situated first and then go back out and fill the second full-time.
All right.
Sounds like a plan.
Is the, is this a busier or slower time of the year? Once you get to the like January, February, is there a quieter time in the office for where it benefits training? I mean, obviously somebody coming in during elections is not good, but is January a better time to?
January is a better time. Yeah, it is. It is. But, um, we go in, we go in cycles. And the only thing I can say, say as well is that John's knowledge and expertise as an attorney and also as a former registrar of voters has, has been very, very helpful to me and to the office. So we look forward to his continued participation.
Yeah, he's been around. He's been in town forever. So he knows everybody. It's, it's always good to have a familiar face in there too. It's good. All right.
All righty. Well, this is excellent news.
All right. So, um, if I could get, um, first a motion to approve Carol Rend- Rendy. Rendy as an administrative assistant to the town clerk is a full-time position and becomes effective December 8th, 2025 if approved.
Second.
It's unanimous. And then if I could get a motion to approve to hire John Amerelios on a part-time basis, 30 hours weekly for three months, beginning December 2nd, 2025.
So.
Second.
It's unanimous. All right.
All right. It's great.
All right. Uh, outside employment. Aggie. Hello.
We've never taken up Marjorie.
So, um, outside employment for any employees by our code has to go in front of the board of selection for approval. So Aggie is here to ask for approval.
Right. I've been, um, wanting to teach Mahjong privately. And also I've been doing it at the playhouse, helping the playhouse get more people in upstairs on Mondays. And then they asked me to do beginners on Wednesdays. And so it's been pretty much successful. And so I'd like to continue that. We tried to test it out to see if anybody really wanted to do it. And so I'd like to continue to do that, um, in keeping people coming up to the playhouse upstairs.
So how many hours, this is obviously outside when Latham's, yeah.
Yeah.
So how many hours a week do you think you'll be doing this for? Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And what it's doing is bringing more people to Latham actually, because now we have the open play on Thursdays and Fridays. And those guys who can, who are not working and can do it during the day have been coming to Latham as well. So it just gets more people aware of Mahjong and, and, um, they've been utilizing, we get seven to eight tables every Thursday, uh, Latham for open play. And so they.
It's jammed over there.
Yesterday was bananas. So, uh, I think we had 250, 280 people in the building yesterday.
Is to games as pickleball is to racket sports.
Correct. It's a good analogy.
Now, it's right in a, it's right in a high right now. And there's a lot of people that work or have kids that like the seven to nine time period, which is late, but it's late for me, but.
So I guess my only question is, um, will this impact your work at Latham at all?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's important just to take a minute and talk about why we're doing this, right? So, you know, the reason we're talking about this publicly is because anytime there's a, an town employee that takes, uh, compensation from a similar role, I guess.
Right.
You know, it's.
It could be a conflict of interest, which it is, but you know, we, we should be, I, I didn't even realize I had to do it. So sorry. Um, but, uh, yeah, we should.
That's just a good practice. I mean, it's not, it's not just you, Aggie. It's anybody. It's just, you know, it's, it's getting it out there to say, hey, listen, if, if anybody is, wants to do it, it's great. If, if, if we have others that want to.
My second act is coming pretty soon, probably too. So this is a fun, this is like a fun, fun money kind of stuff.
So when people take Mahjong at Latham, do they pay a fee?
Yes.
Okay. So that fee goes to the town. So I just want to make sure that we're not diverting town resources to private. So just like make it very clear because it's the same thing. And I want to make sure we are making a very clear deciding line.
This place you can take it. It's more expensive to take it at the playhouse.
Yeah.
And it's more expensive if, if, if anybody wants to pay me privately. That's the most expensive. I don't want to do it. So.
I, and it's a different demographic.
Yeah, it is. Definitely the seven to nine group are people still working or people, moms who have lots of little kids. East School just reached out to me to see if I would do a group for them. And, you know, so, um, I said, I can't do anything until I get approval that I can do anything. So I said, let me go before the board and see what they say.
What equipment's required to play Mahjong? You need, you don't need a racket, I guess.
You need a set. They're tiles. Tracy knows how to play.
All right. Any other questions?
Yep.
If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from, uh, I'm going to say Aggie because I can't even know how to say.
I got to.
I got to. I got to Aspen Wall to teach Mahjong at the New Canaan Library Playhouse Theater and Private Lessons in which she will be compensated. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Can I go back?
You can go back.
Oh my God. Kathy's probably losing it without.
All right.
Thank you. That'll be Bill. Okay. We are here to request, uh, to remove Bill Parrott from probation. Did a performance evaluation on him, um, documented. He's very detailed, asked great questions, has brought in new operational issues and is very well-liked by the staff. So we would like to recommend we bring him off probation.
That's great news.
That's great. Thank you. Glad to have you. I've been hearing great things. So, um, you know, we're, we're thrilled to have you here.
Thanks. Very happy to be here.
All right.
The more, the more you can come along with him for president, that's great. We'll do.
He's the reason I, when all the times we need to be here, he's doing the other stuff. Focused on, uh, you know, the, the training and consist, the biggest thing is consistency over the last six months is, you know, with every shift and having that consistent person all the time, you know, versus, you know, the schedule I had of bouncing afternoons, mornings, you know, missing it this week, you know, so that, that's provided that consistency also.
You know, having an extra set of eyes is huge. I mean, where, when you can't be there, it's nice to have backup. So.
Happy to help. Very good.
Great. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the human resources director to remove Bill Parrott from Parrot. Names correctly as somebody whose name gets butchered all the time. Uh, Parrot from probationary status.
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, the next item is appointments. We have a number of board and commission members, uh, and, and, and some replacements of, oh, I forgot my little sheet, but, um, the first one is, uh, an appointment of Arvin Bajaj for a three-year term ending December 1st, 2028. This would be to, uh, replace Paul Foley, who is, um, I guess retiring, moving to Florida more full-time. And, um, I guess I would be remiss before asking for this appointment, not in, um, thanking Paul for his many years of service to the town of New Canaan. First as a town council member and then as a fire commissioner. And now as a, most recently as police commissioner. So he has a, a long tenure of distinguished service to New Canaan. And, uh, I know he'll be back and forth a lot, but, um, we'll miss, miss seeing him more regularly. So let me do that first. And then, um, and then Arvin, um, I've known Arvin for quite a while now. Um, and he's just a, a great steady guy, um, who I think will make, uh, a great commissioner. So I hope, uh, I know Amy said she.
Yeah, no, I met Arvin yesterday. We had a great conversation and, you know, I think the police commission, it's a really important commission. I mean, it's like you are, that is who the police said, the way it's set up, it's, it's reporting up to commission. So, you know, it's a serious job. And, you know, you need to know what is needed from the police standpoint, but you also have to look at it from a town pit standpoint and budgeting and fiduciary in terms of, you know, oversight. So, um, uh, we had a great conversation and, you know, I think he'll be a very positive, uh, new member.
Yeah, he is. That's the perfect word, positive. He's a very positive person and, uh, he just isn't, he is, he's strong and strict when he needs to be, but he's very positive. He works well with others. And, uh, and I've known him a long, long time as well. He's a, he's a very good guy. So, uh, we're very lucky that he stepped up and, uh, and has agreed for, to do the three-year term. So.
Yeah. I mean, we ask a lot of these commissioners. These are, these are, you don't necessarily come with a skill set to do this. You have to understand, you know, the, what the needs of the police department is. You have to understand fiscal issues. You have to understand human resource issues and kind of what your role is vis-à-vis all the town bodies. So it's, we ask a lot of people and I appreciate him raising his hand.
All right. So if I could get a motion to approve the appointment of Arvin Bajaj for a three-year term ending December 1st, 2028.
So move.
It's unanimous. Okay. And then, um, we have a, a number of, um, reappointments on the planning and zoning commission. Uh, there's no one new on this list. These are just, um, renewals of people's terms. Um, so any question? Okay. Okay. So any questions? If not, okay. I got a big list to read. If I could get a motion to reappoint Dan Radman, John Engel III and John Cris as regular members for three-year terms ending December 1st, 2027. Reappointment of Krista Nielsen, Chris Herring and Alan Swerdlow as regular members for three years' terms ending December 2028. And reappointment of Krista Larson, Megan Mensching and Bill Pratt as alternate members for two-year terms ending December 1st, 2027.
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous.
I just, I mean, I, the P and Z to me, I want to take a second. I want to take a second here. And just, you know, looking at all these names and all these residents that we have that serve on D and Z that give more time to New Canaan than any other. I, and I've been on town council for years and I always thought those meetings were bad. Planning and zoning. Those meetings are literally forever. And I just pulled up their agenda for tonight, December 2nd. And I looked through this agenda. You know, the, uh, the agenda, not only is it long, but they get into, they're doing inclusionary zoning. They're doing, you know, existing site plans, all this stuff that's complicated and very time-consuming. And, and they're shaping New Canaan. So, you know, I know we, we all support what the work they do, but we also want to thank them for everything they do for this town and, and the amount of hours that they dedicate, sometimes late into the night. So thank you to each and every one of these folks for stepping up. It's not easy. It's not easy work. So.
It's often late into the night and, uh, and it, I always say it is the hardest working board in New Canaan. I think it is the hardest working board. So I appreciate it. And just, uh, for all of you, um, unfortunately I tried to send out a letter, uh, to the governor around 8002, the recent, uh, he signed on Wednesday evening, 8002. That piece, single piece of legislation is going to put a huge onus on our planning and zoning. You know, we're fortunate that we're going through this, um, you know, reg review, but, uh, there are significant challenges ahead of this community with that piece of legislation. And so, um, you know, I look forward to working with them and all of us trying to find a path forward, uh, for this community. So, the next, I, uh, the next reappointment is for the audit committee. Um, and it's a most, uh, reappointment of Robin Fryer, Janet Lanaway and Tony C.C. Do you guys have any questions about those reappointments?
No, just a, just a comment that they also are working hard and they're, they're quietly working behind the scenes and really have done a nice job. You know, sort of the second, uh, wave of our audit committee. We, we had a great first wave of this. These guys are really taking the, taking the reins and the second wave has been equally as successful as the first. So thank you to all them as well.
They're kind of entering their busy season now with, uh, the audit coming in and review. So Anne's favorite season probably. So.
It, it profiles you well, Anne.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So if I could get a motion, uh, for the reappointment of Robin Fryer, Janet Lanaway and Tony C.C. for three-year terms ending December 1st, 2028.
So move.
Second. It's unanimous. And then, um, the purchase order increase. Anne.
Good morning. I'm looking to get, um, last year we entered into a contractual CLA for next internal audit on our purchasing, um, policy, uh, process and things. And we, um, we did a PO at that time for the full 58, but it was in the general fund. So that dies at the end of the year. We got approval to move the funds over to hold on to them. So now we need to set up the PO for, to pay the residual bill. So the increase we're asking for is 5,005.71 and 90 cents. And this will close out the bill for the project.
What was the total?
58, uh, 58.5.
Okay.
Been helpful.
Yeah, we're looking to get a, um, a, a full, um, like a robust policy out of it. We, you know, uniform guidance, things like that. We really need to have a, a more robust.
I mean, did it give you any like big, like, oh, wow, we need to fix this or did it reinforce that your good systems applies? I mean, I mean, because it's a lot of money to now analyze. And so what do we get out of the analysis?
I think it's definitely a reinforcement and there are ideas of different things we could change on it. Formalizing, which is what we know we have to do is put things in writing, have those. Formalizing, which is what we know we have to do is put things in writing, have those policies in writing. There's a lot of things we do, but they're not in writing. We've changed a lot of things. We now have to really document them and put them into a, a document.
So is this, it was a good exercise or well worth the, the?
Um.
Cause we're here. I mean, I guess you don't know till you do it, right?
You don't.
Right.
Okay.
Great. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the chief financial officer to increase a previously approved purchase order with CLA in the amount of five thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety cents for costs related to the internal audit.
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. And then you have in, on your tablets, the contracts under ten thousand dollars. You have any questions? If not, we will move over to tax over payments. Any questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve refund or ta, tax over payments. Sixteen thousand, eighty-one dollars and nine cents.
So move.
Second. Is there a way when this gets loaded, if it could get loaded up profile and not landscape, just, oh. It, it's just damn good. I mean.
I don't know.
I have no idea. Throwing that out there, okay? You know, because you can't tip your eye pack because it moves.
I'm guessing because it's eight and a half.
A landscape, it's a landscape.
It's a landscape document. Yeah. Okay. Sleckman's comments. I guess the only thing this Friday night is the holiday stroll downtown. And I don't really have anything else right now.
I just, I've been getting some, some good feedback. I just got some yesterday on parking on Elm Street. Seems to, the spaces seem to be turning over quicker and you know, I heard yesterday from somebody who doubted the move and who's sort of come around now to say, hey, things are, things are moving, spaces are opening up. So that was nice to hear from someone who didn't think in the beginning that it was a good idea. So hopefully folks are getting used to it. So that seems to be, you know, the, the feedback. And then the only other comment was, I, I know the charter revision commission's meeting, but what's, is there any update there as far as?
So tonight is their meeting, the first real meeting. I mean, the last meeting was more of an organizational, they elected officers and, and things like that. So tonight will be their first real substantive meeting.
In a public area. Okay.
That's right. So, okay.
Oh, just one other plug for our recognition event. We are going to recognize some social or some, some municipal folks who've served New Canaan and that's coming up next week. So we'll, we'll, we'll fill you in on details there.
Volunteers.
Volunteers.
Yeah.
That's right. Not employees, but volunteers. Years, years and years of service. That's on December tenth.
Great.
All right.
Okay. With that, our next item is personnel matter. And it's, I guess, if you want to come forward, it's a possible executive session and consideration and vote on possible termination for town employee Beth Strobel. Do you want to go in? I guess the question is, do you want this held in executive session or do you want it in public session? Okay, so we will move into, can I get a vote to move into executive session?
So move.
It's unanimous. And I guess we will be inviting in Tucker, Beth and Deb, Cheryl and Anne. And then Chris Hodson is online.
Rob Montori from the Union.
Okay, great. So, thank you. Unanimous. Is it unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're live? Okay. So we've had an opportunity to review this personnel matter and as a result, I'd like to ask for a motion to terminate the employment of Beth Strobel for reasons discussed in executive session and that termination would be effective immediately.
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous.